Hope this sun dies out and goes away some.
People are just gonna have to. I think it's gonna come down to that.
Yeah. New spring.
Yes, I heard another one this morning.
Yeah.
Doing a new variant.
We're good? All right. We'll call this order as we do every meeting. First off, we'll start with the pledge. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, and moral.
Thank you. Two other orders of business before we get started. First of all, welcome our newest member.
Thank you.
Marilyn. Congratulations.
You.
You'll do fine. Kind of baptism by fire here this morning. Next, we might just have a 30-second moment of silence for former Sheriff Steve Cox, who passed away. But we'll do that at this time. Thank you. All right. First off, pages 33 through 32, Superior Court Judge Sabecki. Anybody want to say anything first before we get started up here? Anybody or?
I kind of do.
Okay.
I am new, obviously, to the county council, but I'm not new to budgeting. I spent better than half a day yesterday going through this budget and a little alarmed, to be honest with you. County takes in right at $12 million a year. We've been spending about $15.5 million a year, which obviously is deficit spending, eating into the reserve. And this year's budget proposal is over $20 million. So I see, I definitely see the need for some belt tightening and serious scrutiny over what we're looking at today.
Thank you. Anybody else? Who are you?
It, yeah, it definitely, you know, I spent some time over the weekend and we probably do need to do some things that we're not accustomed to. And also, I'd just like to mention to those that don't know, Darren Holder is one of the candidates to replace Dave Smith, and Darren's taken time today to come down and go through the process with us so that if he's successful in getting the seat, he's, hopefully will be ready to go here whenever we come back in a couple of weeks to do the rest of this. So thanks for coming today, Darren.
Thank you.
Later.
The only thing I'd like to add to that is, and I agree with Tom, there's some things in there. One thing that I did notice is that we have a lot of buckets of money that have not been spent for long periods of time. So that might be something, you know, as we go through this process, we look at, you know, reducing those. They can always appropriate that later. It seems like we tend to pad things and then we don't use them just in case where we should be, you know, coming back and giving you that money later. So that's one thing I want to look at as we go through this process. I think, I don't think that'll be a big deal for most people, you know, because they're not exceeding those budgets anyway. Let's take the money out of that that we don't need, reduce that budget.
Well, it keeps us from, keeps us from having the flexibility to do some things that department heads are requesting, like additional monies for this person because of these reasons, or a new copier. I mean, it's hard to allocate money for those things when you're so loaded on what you're budgeting. I mean, the more accurate job you can do budgeting, the better job we can do managing it.
All right, we're good. The only I'll say is I did look at the general fund for the last seven years, and it is obviously going in one direction. So thanks for the comments. With that, get on.
Thank you and good morning. Against with all of that, I have a little historical perspective. I was asked 19 years ago, when I went to my first budget meeting, to increase the amount of money that I was putting in, that Judge Dwyer had put in for pauper attorneys because they didn't like having to have extra appropriations all the time for doing things. We're kind of at a perfect storm for my budget here. For 18 years, it's been really stable. One of the first things I asked for was an extra employee 18 years ago because of our caseload, which was granted. I'm here to ask for that again. So that's one of our big asks. We're busy. We're past busy. We are operating and you've been kind enough to grant us a referee that took off some of the pressure. But we have bottlenecks in getting our work done. And until we can get a full-time magistrate, excuse me, which we're going to request at the next budget cycle at the state level, one way of relieving those bottlenecks is to get another court reporter. I can work a little harder, although the last statistics that the state, state does. Now, I can't say that those are super accurate. Knox County now has four full-time judicial officers paid by the state. I think according to the last census, that's with about 3,600 extra people. They pad their stats. They've asked for things. But we're to the point now where it's, I think we were setting pleas for people that wanted to plead guilty in December. We just don't have time. My staff just cannot get the work done, and that's why I need another person. In the budget, I've also asked for an increase of $10 an hour for pauper attorneys. It's been at $90 an hour for quite a long time. The people that work for me and for the court system as court-appointed counsel are in private practice, and they do deserve to get paid. And that 90 going to 100, if you approve it, is way under what any attorney would charge you if you or I had to go hire them to do something. I also, I appreciate the work that's been done over the years on getting us information out early as far as raises and those kinds of things. COVID affected everyone. It particularly affected the operations of the Superior Court. We have a tremendous volume there, and one of the things that it increased was, I would say, a good 50% of the incarcerated people in jail or in prison all filed motions or letters trying to get out because they were super concerned with their health all of a sudden after some of them have been using methamphetamines for 15 years. But my staff has to handle all those things. They all have to be filed. They all have to be, without any additional cases being filed by the prosecutors, it increased our caseload tremendously. And it continues to do so now with the Delta variant. We get phone calls every single day that have to be answered by the staff, from parents, wives, girlfriends, sisters, brothers. "I've got COVID. Can't come to court. I need to continue this." My staff has worked every single day. Some of them have worked remotely a few days. We mostly work in person because we have so much non-electronically filed material to deal with that comes either directly from the jail and has to be put into the system, which my staff does. The clerks do not do that, or it comes by the U.S. mail. And there's just no way of dividing that out if people are all over the county and working remotely. That's why I've asked for the $1,000 bonus. And the employee raise of $5,000 is based on the amount of work that my staff does. They work overtime, day after day. They work through their lunches, day after day. The training requirements, I'd say it takes over a year now to train up a court reporter, and that's if they already have legal experience because of the Odyssey system that we're dealing with statewide, our case management system. They are highly trained employees. I certainly, the last one that I had to hire, I actually stole from Pike County with the permission of Pike County Judge before I did it. But they're hard to come by, and it's important to keep them. And the training is tremendous. It takes staff time to train them up. And I could go into that farther on why that is with the new system we have, if you'd like to. But that's the reason that I'm asking. They're as highly trained as anyone in the county. Anyone in the county. And that's why I'm asking for that. Cell phone, I need some more storage. I'd like to be able to get some things remotely that I could sign. I come into the jail every weekend, sometimes twice a weekend to sign paperwork. I'd like to get up to speed, maybe so the prosecutor could send me some of this stuff remotely so I didn't have to do that on occasion. And I think that's the highlight of why there's an increase in my budget that's been so stable for, I think this has been the easiest meeting I've gone to for the last 18 years because it just stayed flat the whole time. But we've run into both increases from the prosecutor's office. I'm sure Mr. Murray can tell you about the number of cases they file, the number of important cases that they file, all in my court. He has juveniles in Judge Smith's court, and Judge Smith has his own burdens that he has to deal with. But it's increased over time. For those of you that have been around for a long time, we used to just have two prosecutors, Byron Overton and I, and we were about to get crushed by the weight of not having additional prosecutors 18 years ago. But that office has expanded. The number of cases that are filed have expanded year after year after year. And it just happened to coincide with COVID-19 that we need the extra space. The other thing that I would like to kind of sow the seeds for here is thinking about giving us another employee, which would help tremendously right now, is also going to take care of part of the issue if we get a magistrate. Because just getting the magistrate itself, which is a state-paid position, they still need support staff. And we'd be able to divide some of that up once we get going as well. So I would anticipate over the next two or three years that we're gonna have to expand court staff if we get that magistrate as well. They have to have staff to allow them to handle the caseload that they're going to have. Okay. Anyone have any questions about them?
Yep, I have a few.
Okay.
On the cell phone, are those owned by the county or that's just a monthly stipend?
I've had the same cell phone plan for, since I was a prosecutor.
Oh, I mean, if we're talking about, when you say additional money for cell phones, is that giving people a monthly stipend for the use of the phone or those county phones?
As far as I know, the county owns that phone.
Okay. The other question, and I was, I went through Sunday, I went through every line on everything, all the way through, all day. If I did my math right, Beth Shelby and Brandy pay is not correct. Is that right? It looks like you just took what they were taking and added their raise, not considering the 27 pays versus the 26 pays.
Like a negative 2%.
So you're actually getting a decrease if we don't, there's 27, there's 27 pays instead of 26.
Right.
If you took, if you take the math, what that is divided by 27, times it by 26, that's less than what they're making now. So.
It's like 2% less.
They're all, instead of getting a raise, you're all getting a 2% decrease because of the math.
They are, it's mandated, their salary's mandated by the state on that graph that we have that.
The math would still be wrong.
Do we pay out 27 or do we pay out 26 on the state?
We would.
It just needs to be correct.
It just needs to be.
So we would do the total, we would do the total of the state mandate divided by the 27 pays. So it would look perhaps a decrease on the bi-weekly amount.
But it's still the same amount.
It's still the same amount annually.
It just looks.
And this is the only person, because if you do the 27, 26 on every single employee, it doesn't do that.
Right. I mean, that's the issue with the 27 pay. But if she took the annual amount and then that's what she has, and we take that divided by 27, that's why it looks a decreased amount. It's a true salary.
I mean, I had the same thing, and that happened in another court, too.
Yeah. Is it right or wrong?
Well, I think that's the number that they will pay out.
Okay.
But it just wasn't in the same context as everything else.
Well, the calculation process is a little bit different because it's mandated salary.
Okay, we'll look at it because I.
We can discuss it.
Yeah. I would say this, I'd be happy to correct. Obviously, we have, we have some issues here, and I'm sure.
If it needs to be, we will. I just, I still don't think the math is correct. Am I the only one that's going to talk?
You sound good, Tony.
Well, you know, Mike's not here. Tom's first one. Her first one.
No.
So in echoing off what Tom said earlier, if we're looking at every single line item money that we appropriate and don't use, we very rarely use much in the meals and lodging category. Does that need to stay that high, or is it something that can be?
I mean, I'd be happy to come back and ask for extra appropriations when we have extra things.
I'm just saying.
I just, it has been a category that we've had for a long time. The state changes over the last year. They didn't have very much in-person stuff for staff or for myself. So, you know, I would anticipate if, well, I don't want to anticipate what COVID-19 is going to do next or what they're gonna do. We just had a conference that was in-person. Whether the prosecutor's gonna have theirs in December, I have no idea.
One other thing, you know, you have 12,000 in office machines, but you spend about 4,000 a year. Do you anticipate using that entire 12,000, or is that something we can lower, and then if you have something, we can appropriately?
I mean, it's, it's not, I guess it's, it's hard to say when something will break down. As long as you understand.
Absolutely.
I guess as long, as long as the understanding is, you know, I've got one main copy machine and printer, and everybody uses it, right? The prosecutor comes up and uses it, the other attorneys use it, which is fine. They have their own as well. You know, if it breaks, if it needs additional maintenance, I'm gonna be screaming at the top of my lungs to get something done tomorrow. But other than that, that really doesn't bother me. I know that we've shifted money in the past over to pauper attorneys to go forward with that. But that's, yeah, that may be someplace where you could cut some money.
How about on maintenance contracts? It's just been 28, 22 in 19 and 20, and this year we're 28, 22, but we're budgeting for 62, 50. Anything?
The maintenance contracts can be a variety of things. We've had in the past to pay for maintaining the computer service and maintaining the court reporting system. The court reporting system's getting a little more difficult to maintain, and we've been trying to hold off a major redo of that until we get the remodeling going instead of spending a ton of money on that. So I'd be a little hesitant to cut that a lot, probably. But once again, same kind of answer to that is that in the past, I've been specifically requested to not come back and ask for appropriations and then have some, have some money available for that. Hopefully, in the future, we may shift that. If we get all-new equipment like we have here over in the court system, whether that would be part of the county budget or we'd have a unified number to go forward, it may be better. But we've been just trying to juggle. I think we have our next meeting, the 22nd, on the, on the building project, so.
I'd just make the comment, too, on the pauper attorneys. Years ago, the judges will remember, we were kind of hard on them because the pauper attorneys, we always went over terribly on those. But those two guys have implemented some fees and stuff that have helped out actually in paying for some of that. And, and the numbers we get on the pauper attorneys now are pretty good numbers anymore. So I'll, I'll give you a little credit on that one. You have done a better job on that situation because we used to scream about the extra money we had to spend every year for pauper attorneys, so.
And I think that's what led to the first request, that we try to be a little more realistic on what you spend year to year.
Right.
Because it was getting hammered once a quarter, probably.
Anybody else?
No.
Can we change, are we gonna change members?
This is kind of courtesy of them, have the conversation, you know. We'll have our meetings later on. We're good.
All right.
Thanks, Judge. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Judge.
Thank you.
One judge to the next. Could be worse. We could be on the other side. Was that right?
Well, good morning, and Marilyn and Tom, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I kind of echo, I guess, a lot of what Judge Sabecki said. Historically, he told you what we all did in COVID, and, and one of the reasons, of course, that the court systems were operating consistently is because this Indiana state constitution says the courts shall be open. We weren't allowed, we didn't have the luxury of being able to close down for safety purposes. But we did take advantage, of course, when the commissioners and the council approved the social distancing days and working two on and some at home and trying to get our technology up to date where we can get more work from home. We were able to do that both through our office and through the state, providing some laptops, which was a nice touch. We got those things done. We had put, Judge Sabecki and I, I wouldn't brag on this a little bit, we put an emergency order in place when COVID was starting to hit prior to the Supreme Court telling us all we had to have an emergency order. And I think the commissioner's order on the courthouse access was right behind. Ours was access to the courthouse and to the courts and safety precautions, most of which are still in place because of what's going on now. So as far as the budgets, you'll see, I've done similar. I've also asked for the 5,000 raise per court reporter. I've also asked for the bonuses to be attributed to the court reporters and to probation, the probation folks on my side of the ledger. And I don't know if that's the same issue, Tony, you just raised about the probation, if that's showing, because you have to use the scheduled amounts for the years of experience that are under the state mandate and then didn't do it as a 27 pay, I think it is a 26 pay.
I think.
It may be the same issue.
I think it's right. This one is. Is that a new one?
We'll take a look and make sure.
Okay. All right. And she has, I don't know, do you have the schedule, the state's schedule and the years of experience? The other thing I want to talk about is, and one of the reasons, not just our efforts in COVID and increasing the caseloads, and even with COVID, you know, court business didn't stop, and the case numbers don't stop. Since I've come on in 2007, about three years ago, there was a significant increase in what we called the CHINs cases, child abuse and neglect cases that are all filed in my court. That's also an increase in the juveniles. That's also, unfortunately, is an increase in pauper attorney fees because when the law changed, it said not only do, in a juvenile court, do I have to appoint counsel for the juvenile, who obviously has no funds, and I have to give, sometimes I have to give them for the parents. In CHINs cases, I have to give them for custodial parent, non-custodial parent, sometimes a stepparent. So it's, those are usually, they're all means-tested. They all go through the same thing. We try to order reimbursement. There are a lot of families that can't afford the reimbursement. So that's, that's where our lion's share, I think, of the pauper fees come from. The issue I had, Judge Sabecki got a court reporter from Pike County, well, I stole one from him, with his permission, a young lady that used to work for me when I was in practice, and I had told her years ago that opening came, she would have the opportunity to apply, and Judge Sabecki knew that. But she did. So I lost Alice to retirement. I lost Mary Litherland to Better Pay. So she retired after 38 years, but took a job at Crane, making nearly twice what she's making as a court reporter in their legal administrative area. So my request is not only for the hours worked and the effort and skill level, it's also because I think when we look at our numbers, we're not competitive for this, for the skill set, somebody that's got legal training. I actually interviewed two court reporters with experience, experience on our system, Odyssey. I was turned down. One's making more money, well, both of them are making more money in the private sector. So that, that was kind of a concern going forward. We need to be able to attract quality and keep and retain quality people. It is, as Judge said, very difficult to train up somebody. It takes a year or longer, so. I have hired a young lady. Her husband's a police officer with the city. They're new to our community, not much experience, so the training process is taking longer than being able to get someone with some experience or legal background, worked in a law office or ECS. So that's the, one of the primary reasons. Mine was, my experience was that, and I figured that with the 3% raise that was proposed, that comes out to 2360 an hour for court reporters. With the 5,000, it comes out to 2589. Notice the people that I would be turned down by was making in excess of $25 an hour. Other people, and believe it or not, you guys probably see this on the news, people were saying they were getting paid to stay home. So some of them were just applying, just to facilitate, put an application out, I think. So to be able to attract and retain, I'm proposing that $5,000 raise going forward to get us up and get us competitive. The other thing I asked for was a part-time court reporter. And that is basically someone we would utilize to be pretty much at the disposal of the referee position. And Marilyn and Tom, I don't know if you know the referee, I think Tony and Matt and Mike know about that. Several years ago, when I came in in 2007, we took on some small claims jurisdictions. Circuit Court did not have small claims jurisdiction. The Superior Court actually started when Judge Dwyer was here as our small claims court. When I was prosecutor, we had to go to the legislature and with the judges, and we were able to get small claims elevated to Superior Court because of the increases at that time. Superior Court kept most of the lower-level criminal and the small claims, all the small claims and traffic. As that evolved over the years, between Judge Arthur and Judge Dwyer, Superior Court wound up with almost all the criminal. Circuit Court wound up with all the family law, the foreclosures, the juveniles, the CHINs, probate, about everything else. And we have to file case plans with the state to kind of show what our case numbers are and how we're balancing those out amongst the courts. When I came in, there was a bottleneck in, particularly in small claims, so we took on some of those, particularly the landlord/tenant issues, to get those moving in. So instead of taking three months to get to court and get to court within a month, with the urging of the prosecutor's office, they were all in favor of us getting a referee to assist them with the child support issues. Do statutes say you can have a referee for child support and/or small claims if you have small claims jurisdiction? So I came to the council at the time, told them what that would be and how it would work. They were good enough to give us a referee in 2013. So I was fortunate enough to take the small claims off my courtroom and put them with the referee in all the child support cases. That allows the prosecutor's office then to spend more time and effort collecting child support for Davis County citizens, and they've always done, and Mr. Murray's office has done a great job on that over the years. They also generate what's called incentive monies. So part of the referee's time and effort and our court staff, so the court reporters that go to cover those, get reimbursed at 66%. Just that part. Now, small claims, they don't. So we do get some back. It's been averaging, I noticed this last year with COVID, about 4,000 a month coming in on reimbursement part. We were at 20. We were at 26,000 last year with COVID along COVID. And we're on to 24,000 now in September, so going back up. But that, that's the position that we're talking about converting to a magistrate if we can get the state legislature on board. And the difference is, a magistrate is state-paid. There's some part-time magistrates, but usually you try to get a full-time. Knox County just got one, effective July, assists their three courts. But a magistrate can be used instead of by local rule where I've got a referee for Circuit Court that can only help Superior Court when Judge Sabecki appoints her as Judge Pro-Tim to help with some things. And we've been trying to do that to catch up his backlog from COVID. Then, at that time, we were down a court reporter, so we were sharing court reporters, and then we had people out with sickness and COVID, so that's been a juggle. But we would not have to have him appoint her, we would have someone then that could come in and be a magistrate for both courts, could take on more things for both courts just by the jurisdictions that's created. So that's the goal. The goal then, and that would be, that's probably a year, two-year process. We've already started on putting information together to try to get that process going. We have to go to State Senate Committee, there's a proposal, there's a committee that reviews all those applications on the state level. And then, but we have to have letters of support, we have to have from the council, from the commissioners, from the attorneys, from the prosecutor, from, you know, local practitioners, citizens that use the court's law, banks. So the more support we can get like that on a local level, the more rate, you know, chance of success we would have on that. Not guaranteed, and sometimes it takes several years and several requests to get it done. But that's what we want to try to do. And then that would become a state-level position, the county would only have to have the court reporter end of it, which would probably, in the future, if that happens, will probably have to be a full-time. Right now, I'm asking for part-time to assist with that position and doing the support, doing the small claims and then anything else Judge Sabecki needs the referee appointed for at this time. That way, it's, it's just part-time, it's just an hourly rate, it's not a benefit package, and we don't have to worry about that for several years. So that, if we're allowed to get the part-time, I think that is something that we put in our package that shows that we have community support, we have council support for going forward, asking for a magistrate. Shows them that we are, we're willing to invest in it, and the county's willing to put funds behind supporting that magistrate's position. Why I'm asking for that position at this time. We will be making that application, I think it has to go in by next, early next spring, summer. So you guys will probably all get questionnaires and letters from the courts asking for your thoughts and support on it, as well as the commissioners and other community leaders. Alright, any questions about anything? Our longevity on our proposal, of course, is down about $7,000 since we don't have Alice and Mary, who's retired.
I circled that one, yeah, went down to $7,400, so I couldn't.
Some things are up, and I think, Tony, you may have asked this question about travel and whatnot, but we didn't spend as much as last time, and I, I, like Judge Sabecki, serve on several committees, Judicial Conference House committees that we're appointed to, to do. I've done the child support guidelines revisions, and now we're doing the parenting time guidelines revisions. So those require monthly meetings, work, travel. Now, this year, a lot of it's been remote, just kind of starting back, or was starting back. They, they did the conference at French Lake this year for the spring and fall. There is one coming up in Carmel, and they had one in Carmel that was in-person in June. We usually wind up kind of asking for additional or transferring money around to fill out those categories, so I don't know if, some of them are up. We're up on our request for pauper fees because of the $90 to $100 rate. Most attorneys are charging 250 to 350 in our area. So I think that's long past due. We're up $400 on registration and conference fees, just because conferences and registration fees are going up.
Most of those things, I didn't look at anything compared to last year, because I looked at previous years, is what I did.
Okay.
Those are the questions, which leads to, evidently, you're planning on buying a copy machine or something, I mean, we haven't spent, in the last three years, we spent a total of $1,000, and we got $10,000 in there, so I didn't know if we're looking for a...
We tried to replace our computers. We've been trying to do a schedule like two and two and two and, and through Dale, so we were looking to do that. We're past due to get like three of them done. Courtroom computer, and that program's on its last legs, but we're kind of waiting to see where we're going on the remodel and what equipment we get for that.
Does all that go through Dale or?
Both, yeah, we're all going through Dale and ordering our computers and whatnot. So that's, that's kind of an estimate based on those. Our copy machine is, we have something to deal with, or was with Hudson's and now it's personal, I guess, so. And some of that, again, it's like Judge Sabecki said, we may not use it.
Yeah.
May or may not get to. I know the computer and the system and, but the referee is using in the guild commissioners' room is, if it goes down, it, it takes like three hours to get it back up for some reason. And it has reception trouble in there for the wifi and internet, so it's, makes it difficult. And Odyssey's all internet-based, so it's, makes it tough to stay online and, or have a big delay with everybody sitting there waiting while your computer comes back up. But we're, again, kind of waiting to see where we're going with that.
That's fine, it's just, I'm just looking, if you look at past years, that's the only reason I ask those questions. Everybody else, anything?
Oh, I don't know if you saw, we, you know, we had the, since we went to the Microsoft 360, we had to add licenses for that, we didn't have that before. But that's up like 1750, and that includes the new part-time court reporter, if we get that. Some of my court reporters were not notaries, and we're gonna get them to be notaries, because we don't, we have, we have but one notary, I think, in the courthouse now.
So your office 365 is separate from what Dale pays in his license fee?
Yeah. We all pay our own licenses now.
What's happening on postage? He has no expense for postage, but he has had in the past. There's several, several kinds of that. So we haven't made any changes to move postage to a central place or? Okay.
Mike? Marilyn?
Thank you Judge, appreciate it.
Thank you Judge. Thank you.
Well, do you want to, mean to talk about CASA next?
Yeah.
Beth's here for probation, so. Misty's here for CASA, our director, but I think essentially, first is all pretty much the same as last year. There's one category, dues and subscriptions is down from 2,000 to 1,000. We have the Microsoft licensing over there for three licenses for the staff. And then advertising, we took down from 8,000 to 4,500. Yeah, I remember on CASA, and Tom and Marilyn, the CASA program started years ago by Judge Arthur with two volunteers and that did most of it. In 2005, the state made it mandatory that if in CHINs cases and some dissolution in juvenile cases, we have to appoint either a guardian ad litem, which is attorney, at $90 an hour, or use CASA. Well, CASA are all volunteers. Our, our director and coordinator train up volunteers to, they go 30 hours plus continuing education to work with the children and give them a voice in the courtroom on the CHINs cases and sometimes delinquency and sometimes divorce cases. State actually eventually put money behind that and said, okay, now you have to have it, but we'll give you some money by way of grants. And they're matching grants, so it's, they, they have some magic wand in Indianapolis to figure out how they're gonna give it to us. It went up, it went down, it went up, now it's down. So it was 15 something last year, it's 12 something this year. We have to match it in the court budget, and, and we do that with space and with equipment and with the funds, so that's why you see the two numbers. The advertising, though, we did actually, there was an incentive kind of supplemental grant that came in last year that allowed us to really get out and get some billboards up and do some additional advertising, because recruiting is, that's basically what, what Misty gets done, is recruiting. So we, but the, the CASA is, again, as Mike mentioned, one of the things we did to kind of save on pauper attorney fees, because it, it saves us anywhere from 50 to $100,000 a year. Last couple of years it's been down because of COVID and the cases have dropped a little bit, but when they were skyrocketing a couple of years ago in the CHINs area, if I'd had to appoint an attorney each time for each of those kids, it would have been astronomical. So it is a great program, volunteers work hard, and again, they're volunteers, they don't get paid for anything. They go through the training, they show up in court, they give me reports, they give me pictures, they tell me what's going on with the kids and how they're adjusting and where they're at or with their folks, or if they're in placement in a foster home or elsewhere. They visit them at least monthly, they come to court all the time and, and tell me what's going on, so it's a great program. Unfortunately, it's one of those programs where they give us and the state take us away, so.
You say it's about $12,000 for this coming year?
Yeah, it was, I think it was 12. I don't have the exact number.
15,4, I think, this year, I remember.
12,894. And we had to match that in our, that's why we have the 12,894 in our budget.
Yeah, thanks.
Any questions about anything else?
I don't know.
Okay. You finished, thank you.
So Beth next, is that how you see that?
Yeah.
Our budget is the same for the juvenile probation users' fees, and on the adult probation fees, we have a decrease in the software maintenance. We still use CSI, which is the old, our old tracking system. The state has moved to Odyssey, so that the whole state is in one tracking system, and probation has done the same thing. But we still pay our CSI so that we can access old records. There are some records that we had that did not transfer to Odyssey or the SRS, and that really comes in handy if we need to look something up, records checks, we have to do criminal history reports and those kind of things, so. But it did go down $1,000. They charge us $2,000. The only other change on the adult probation users' fees is the new line item for the 365, Office 365 license. Other than that, both of them are exactly the same as last year.
You mentioned fees, fees that are generated to support the program and grants, is there any grant money that comes back into this or?
Not at this time, no. One of the things that we have started in the last couple of years, which other counties have started doing that, for a person to complete, successfully complete probation, we have them to have to have all their fees and court costs paid off for them to be considered successfully completed. And then we file the notice with the courts if they have not successfully completed as far, just the monetary portion of it, just the probation users' fees and the court cost. And then that is made court record, and some people will look their cases up, especially when they are considering expungements to have their records expunged, and they will see that they still owe that. And they have come back in and paid their court costs and paid their probation users' fees, so that has added a little bit to the income as far as, as those two things are concerned, so.
Any other questions for Beth?
This is maybe, at the top line on the adult probation, there's a $200 bonus, what was that for?
$200 bonus? I don't see it on the adult probation.
Yeah, it's on...
Mine has it.
Yeah.
It's account 11037.
It just says bonus $200.
Oh, that was from, was that last year?
Oh, okay. It was, there's no request on that one.
Okay.
And there wasn't a, yeah, 20 or 21, so.
Very good.
That was for the part-time employee, I think.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
The only other thing is, some of these line items, there's a, you know, pretty good request of money that usually doesn't get spent. Can some of that be reduced?
Yeah, yeah, it can.
Okay.
Mostly we have it in there, you know, just in case we do need it.
Right.
And I don't want the line item to disappear.
Right, right.
It's like Office applies as 10,000, but, you know, use like 2,500, 1,000.
Yeah, yeah.
That's something we're gonna have to address here sometime is wearing apparel. Everybody's budget. People are just putting in dollar amounts, and that's really not fair to those who have a lot of employees versus those who have fewer employees. I think what we need to set is a dollar amount per employee, instead of just, obviously, Sheriff's Department and the jail. And Highway Department, this, I'm talking inside the two buildings. But there was looking...
I'm not sure why we need it.
Well, I was looking at some of them who had $1,000, and they had three employees, and then another person had $1,000, and they had six employees. We need to be consistent, so something for us here is, it needs to be a dollar amount per, you know, and, and fair. But I mean, people were throwing dollar amounts when we get in other budgets, and it's not consistent.
I agree. Me too.
We need to pick what that's going to be, 50, 75, 100, I, I don't know. But then that's more fair to the staff that's got six or seven employees versus the ones that had three.
Right.
So.
Yep, one of the things on your evidence-based program, the budget was 15,000, you spent none, and you've got the same request for this year. Explain that a little bit more to me.
A little bit more, that was added in the beginning whenever we were first started to do, we were required to do evidence-based programs. Then they came along and did the, where probation could not, and community corrections departments had to have combined programs. Diana has already had hers in place, so we can just plug people into community corrections evidence-based programs. I kept that in there in case we have new programs that come up that doesn't, Diane doesn't have in hers, and that we could do probation, so that's why that's in there.
But that's something that could be cut, and if you need the money... But that's something that could be cut and if you need the money, we do an additional pro for something?
Some, yes.
Okay, thank you.
On your computers, and I know it's like last year you spent some money on computers, this year not so much, maybe planning on that. Do you have a, you have a schedule, like every so many years you replace those, is that based on your computer system?
Um, it's usually like every four or five years. Unless we get a new person or unless somebody's breaks.
Right. I I just, you know, I know Dale's working with a lot of departments and I don't know if, you know, it's something he schedules out for everyone or if that's individual departments that worry about that, you know, that kind of thing.
It's, it, as far as we're concerned, it's individual.
Okay.
Or it's just the probation department that does that.
You still miss my, miss most of that IT stuff, do you?
I have some ideas on that, too.
How about licensee renewals? Are licenses required in your department?
For, you're talking about software or?
That's the Office three sixty-five.
Oh, that is.
That's it.
That's a new item this year that everybody got put in their budget because when they went to Office three sixty-five, they split it amongst all the departments.
Well, how come some people are like seventeen fifty, some are two thousand?
Depends on each computer, per person, so offices are bigger.
We we have eight in our office, eight employees in our office.
Okay. Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, it used to come out of the general.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I keep reminding that I'm supposed to take breaks now and then, but I think we're all good for a while. Okay. Diana.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Um, so the first one is community corrections. Project incomes, so we'll look at that one first, eleven twenty-two. Um, this is the money that we raise from the fees that we, um, charge our clients who are in our programs. Um, this is the funds that we raise from that, um, to fund the majority of our program. As Beth said, you know, we have to comply with evidence-based programming, continue to meet those measures as required by the state. Numbers and clients that we can serve with the number of staff that we have is a part of that process. So in 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 this line item, um, the, for eleven twenty-two, when it comes to personnel, is where the three percent raise was included. And, um, in this line item, in this, on this, um, area, so. And everything else, I think, remains the same. I did add in the Office three sixty renewal on this one. We do have eleven staff members that's on county computers. This may not stay there, I'm gonna talk to the board, we do have some money in, um, our community transition program that maybe after the first of the year, I'll come and ask to move that over to there. I just kind of never know who I'm gonna get the judge ordered community transition to know, but seems like we might have some money to maybe pay that out of that instead of out of this, so it may come back that I change that. So does anybody have any questions on eleven twenty-two?
The, uh, equipment lease rental?
Yes, Mike.
Okay, hundred fifty thousand dollars, what all does that include?
It's, um, our electronic monitoring bracelets that we have to pay, um, our vendor for on a monthly basis. That bill runs around fifteen thousand or under a month, it just depends on how many clients we have, Mike. Um, that also helps pay for our our required cell phones, um, all my staff are twenty-four seven. Um, so it pays for that, for them to receive text messages and all call, um, things from the sheriff or or city police. So that's what that covers.
Thank you.
You actually think that is gonna go down?
I don't think so. Um, it 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 was a little lower last, last year, Tom, because of COVID. During COVID, you know, we'd have as much court, so we weren't getting as many clients. Our number started to increase, especially last fall after the sheriffs had the outbreak in there and we took some clients from the jail and moved them to electronic monitoring. As of today, we have a hundred and one cli, a hundred and two clients that are on ankle monitor. So there may be a thing where we have to come back and ask for additional money, but I tried to keep it the same as last year. Just trying to figure out where COVID's gonna fall within all this, and so it's just been kind of very iffy. We still don't have work release open, work release is still closed, so every client that I get from court goes on electronic monitoring or a day reporting program depending on if they're a low-risk offender, so. It just all different varies, but our equipment costs have maintained, have been about the same through COVID. So I'm hoping it remains the same next year, if not, I'll be back to ask for an additional.
Thank you.
Okay. So the next one is the community corrections budget, which this is our grant. Ninety-two hundred will be next year from ninety-one hundred this year. Patty and I have this all worked out now to switch back and forth. So, um, in ninety-two hundred, um, that amount was set by the state. They did, there was no opportunity to ask for additional monies from the state for twenty-twenty-two, due to them not knowing either what their revenues were gonna be like from COVID for the state. I understand that possibly by Friday, we might have our grant award letter. So for that, um, was the timeline that we were given a couple of weeks ago. So, um, if you look at personnel services here, I do have retirement. Sheila Petty is planning on retiring at the end of the year. She does have some sick leave at this time that will, she will be due payout. I work with, um, Jen and Misty on this, um, to know how much she had approximately sixty days and what the, um, perf and social security would be for that, so. That budget's in there, so then the clerical salary on this line has also gone down due to the new person bringing in to have a lower pay rate, not to have the same pay rate as Sheila had in the past. That individual is currently working for us part-time and is, I'm going to be moving to the full-time position. And then we'll be on the lookout for another part-time. We are very busy down there, we collect several thousand dollars a day at times. And between that and answering the phone calls from a hundred and two clients who seem to call every single day, multiple times a day, um, it gets a little, it gets a little crazy down there, so we need to continue to do that. I've also included the bonus and longevity in the grant funds this year. Last year I split them up, I took a little more time to figure out how all these could function out of the grant budget and pay the entire amount, hopefully not coming back to have to do additionals and moving money into other categories to use up the state funds due to the fact that we don't want to return those to them, we want to keep those. So, um, it's any, so mainly that, all that state money goes for the one hundred series. Does anybody have any questions on that one? Okay. And then the final one is, uh, community transition, which is eleven twenty-three. And that is the money, and we right now have it left for equipment repairs and maintenance and equipment leasing. This is for the system that we currently have as a security center. That was a communication and scheduling, um, program that we could be in our office and do schedules electronically that would be submitted to, um, the sheriff's department so they knew when to let the client out. Also, the client could also submit a schedule from a tablet at the jail and we would be able to approve or deny those requests or work or whatever permission to do. So, um, we did work out with our contractor on that, that as long as we're closed, um, those fees are reduced to fifty dollars a month to maintain, um, our server at the, at the site where the, uh, equipment is at the, at his home. And then also the other amount is a hundred and some dollars a month to maintain. If any of the equipment is broken when we return to the jail, he'll come and replace it. We won't have to pay any additional money for equipment. Uh, we have a monitor in our lobby that can convey messages to our clients. Um, it also has a way to send texts and other things in the future as we use it, so. Are there any questions? On any of these? Okay. Tom and Marilyn, please come down and visit anytime you want. Come see how busy you are and what all the things that we do. So I will tell you that I do know that we've applied for, um, the, um, money from the state again for the opioid addiction grant that we've had for the last two years. The sixty thousand dollars, we have applied for that again. We don't know yet where that is, Laura kind of oversees that. This is a, we've been running it through our office for Judge Smith, so we hope to find that. Plus, we do have two additional funding opportunities that are coming forth from a grant from the feds and another grant from DMHA to deal with peer recovery in the community. So we are having a peer recovery event this Saturday at Eastside Park from twelve to four to honor those that are in recovery and, um, celebrate those, unfortunately, who have lost their life to addiction. So, but we are having that out at the park this Saturday, so everyone's welcome to attend. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
How are you?
Very good, how are you? So as far as, uh, our budget, um, we may have made some adjustments on some of the line items. Just kind of drop down some of those on the way, uh, uh, kind of compensate for the, uh, three percent increase on, and the contractor services at the same way for the county staff. Besides that, uh, pretty much everything else is, is stayed about the same.
Other than salary increases, everything's about the same?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, some, there's some line items, like I say, we, we dropped some of the, the amounts.
Right.
Uh, there's some that, I mean, that, I know that, uh, office equipment is still high, but that, that include our lease for computers that we had that this, uh, every three years, we got a stagger, uh, between the staff. But what is a, an expense that we have every year. And also we left some allowance. Right now, we have, uh, seven members on the staff, but we have a vacant position, so it will be eight, uh, person, eight people. And, uh, we probably gonna need to consider on to, depending whenever we got that person hired, we may need to change the layout of one of the extra offices that we have there. Originally, we put it to have it for, uh, kind of support staff that we had. We had a part-time, uh, nurse, uh, nutrition, educational program assistant. Uh, she would have come here often, uh, it was a Hispanic. Uh, we also have a community wellness coordinator that she worked on different counties, so we wanted to provide a space for them if they were in the area to work. Right now, it's actually being convenient because we're using that space for the proctoring our surf saver exam that that we do here on the county.
Louise, I see for a summer assistant, you didn't have one in twenty, didn't have one in twenty-one, is that something that we can eliminate from the budget?
Well, normally we have someone, a summer assistant for helping with four H. Unfortunately, twenty-twenty, we didn't have a fair. Uh, this year, based on the numbers and and everything that was going on, we didn't see fit to have someone. I would like, if if possible, to keep that, I, we have some ideas in, in place. We wanted to, uh, one of the goals that we have is to start increasing our outreach for the, especially for the minorities and Hispanic population. And if we had the opportunity to at some point have someone that is bilingual, that can help us with some of the programming, we would like to, to be able to have that opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Louise.
We hate to do this to Bobby, this is his first time, but how about five minutes? Am I good for that? I know we're behind schedule. He's anxious.